Marion, it's nice to see you this evening. Going to item number two, discussion and action on the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held July 7th, 2014. You've had a chance to review those minutes. Is there a motion that they be approved as written? Motion by Lael.
Yes.
Second by Brown. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Lael.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Creed.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Vonstehn.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Yammerer.
Yes.
Item number three, discussion and action on the approval of claims. Mr. Miller, do you have claims for this council to approve this evening?
Mr. Your Honor, lots of them. Inside the claims today, we've got quite a few large purchases. We had a nearly $36,000 quarterly payment to O-MAG for workers' comp. We had the $10,000 payment to the Northwest Water Action Plan that we voted on a month ago. Library roof repair, $18,000. We had $161,000 to RB Eberden Company for the new chip spreader for the street department. Out of the tourism fund, there was $20,000 to the Alba Rotary Club for the Fourth of July fireworks and all-day festivities that they put on. The Chamber of Commerce had the red carpet country ad for $2,000. Mesquita Arts Festival had advertising for $9,200 out of that fund. The airport purchased nearly $56,000 worth of Jet A and 100 low lead. That would be that total for the claims of those. That would bring our total, well, I'd make a motion to approve total claims of $529,282 and 42 cents.
Second.
I have a motion by Miller, second by Benson. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Creed.
Yes.
Yammerer.
Yes.
Lael.
Yes.
Vonstehn.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Item number four, committee and board reports. I guess I will kick it off by saying that I'll be attending the water meeting in Enid on Thursday on behalf of the city. The Economic Development Director is out of town, and I understand that Joe Don will be on vacation. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I'll bring a report back to the board from that meeting. I also have the report here from the library. The summer reading program concluded on July 14th. Ongoing reading programs for youth and adults are in place through the month of August. Weekly story hours have resumed at 3:30 PM on Mondays, and the library is hosting second through sixth grade students' movie Mondays from 1:30 to 3:00. The movies are based on children's books. A World War I program featuring master storyteller John Hinkle will be held at 7:00 PM on August 1st at the Alba Rec Center Gym. The program is hosted by the library and the Oklahoma Arts Council. Mr. Hinkle had been contacted by the library to present a program for the high school students sometime in the future. This is an ongoing project of the library working in conjunction with the public schools to provide the youth in the community with a unique educational opportunity. Mr. Hinkle offered to present the current program free of charge for the community, so I hope we have a good turnout for that August 1st, 7:00 PM at the Rec Center Gym. A Mommy and Me program is now being offered at the library every Thursday from 10:00 to 10:30 AM. The program is run by community volunteers with the library supplying the space and supplement materials. We are excited about the growth of this program and other benefits for the community. Joe Don?
Well, there are several other committees and reports in here. I'll hit the highlights of a couple of them. Well, first, I'll open it up. One of the meetings was the Alba Hospital Authority, and I didn't know if Councilman Brown had any comments he wanted to make about that.
Actually, that particular meeting I was unable to attend. However, I was elected Secretary of the Hospital Authority.
That's what you get.
And then, however, we did have a special meeting to approve some equipment that is very necessary to the operation of our emergency room, and that special meeting was held this last week, actually, on Friday, and that item was approved, so that will restore the x-ray and imaging technology back to standard for this hospital emergency room and other services.
And as part of that, as part of the council book, you say that there is, we did supply the monthly homestead report that it goes out to the hospital board members. I will mention that the director for the homestead, Kelly Parker, will be here in August to give a quarterly report on the homestead. On July 13th, the Alba Board of Adjustments met, and Councilman Miller, have you anything he'd like to mention about that?
We had two items on that agenda. The first one was approved, and the second one was denied. The agenda's printed, or the minutes are printed in your book. If anybody's got questions on that, they can ask those.
The next meeting that we had was on July 9th, no, not July 9th. It would've been the second Monday, second Monday in July was the airport board. It would've been last week, the 14th. I didn't know if Councilman Lael would want to make any comments about that?
We discussed the lease agreement with the board, and it would be discussed the sublease of the racetrack under the Wood Park tract, and we had the annual valuation there for that.
The finance committee met tonight. Had several, had several items of discussion. Councilman Miller, did you want to make any comments?
We did the usual claims and discussed the items that I mentioned earlier. We also talked about the increases in the use tax. The first month that we started seeing the use tax increase was June. We saw a $100,000 increase in that. That's probably 100% from the industrial part, so we can just imagine what we could've done if we'd have got that in a little earlier. Last 10 years utility billing has seen an increase of $1 million over the last 10 years. That's not, that's not per year, that's just the increase that we've seen. Some of that is due to rates, but the majority of that is due to usage in our utilities. We had, we had discussion on those two items for a significant part of our time.
On July 16th, the Tourism Board met. During this meeting, they did discuss for approval and ultimately approved the Woods County Fair Barbecue and Smoke Contest in an amount not to exceed 2,000. They discussed both the junior and senior renegade tournaments, and granted, and I don't have the minutes, but granted an amount not to exceed 2,000 or 2,500 on both of those separately, so a total of, I think, about $5,000. They did vote, vote to approve the funding not to exceed for $2,500 of Heartland Best 2014 Robotics Building Competition, and they also voted to fund Woods County and Alba SWAT Team Glow Run in an amount not to exceed $1,500. And Mayor and Council, that would be the reports that I would have at this time.
Any questions about those board reports?
Councilman Lael, what was, what was the verdict on the go-kart? The sublease and all that was all right?
Anything else? Item number five, our business managers' report items, under tab number five. Joe Don?
Well, we'll start off with the finance report. The city has completed fiscal year '13-'14 across our six major operating funds. The anticipate, the city anticipated, anticipated receiving $13.4 million in revenues and expending $14.4. These six major operating funds include the General Fund, the Alba Utility Authority, the Airport Fund, the Cemetery Fund, the Alba Economic Development Authority Fund, and the Street and Alley Fund. Actual revenues collected was $12,997,979. This is about $438,000 short of staff's projections. The main revenue shortfall, of course, was general fund taxes. This category was about $864,000 short of projections. Other miscellaneous revenues and, other miscellaneous revenues came up to offset that shortfall. And when we compare the revenues to fiscal year '12-'13, we're seeing about $144,000 more than what we had this year than we saw during that year. That's about a 1% increase. In prior years, the city of Alba had been experienced, experiencing revenue increases of about 12% a year. Staff is tracking revenues very closely. By the end of '13-'14, the sales and use tax had rebounded. The city of Alba ended the year with only a 2.7% shortfall in sales and use tax instead of the 5.2% we'd been experiencing. Actual expenditure and encumbrances were $12,528,92. This is $1,955,534 less than budgeted. The department with the largest deviation from the budget is, of course, the General Government Department. The major expense in this department is sales tax transfers, and this, of this, we, of course, we can see declines because we weren't, we weren't bringing in as much sales tax to transfer out. Other departments or funds which spent less money than expected were the General Admin and Sanitation Departments in the AUA, the Alba Utility Authority, the Airport Fund, and the Cemetery Fund. But if we look at actual collections, we see that the city has spent about $1.6 million from two years ago, fiscal year '11-'12. The capital outlay categories across the six major funds reflect a $1.8 million worth of expenditures. This just reveals a major reinvestment in the funds back into Alba. When actual collections are compared with actual expenditures, the city of Alba has spent $470,000 less than what was collected. So these figures are preliminary. We're still working to close out our budget year. Kind of like to recap the projects that we completed during fiscal year '12-'13-'14, then, and talk about a few of the projects we are undergo, we looked to undergo in '14- '15. The projects that were completed, the construction of the, well, the projects that we will be looking at include the construction of the new transfer station and closing the one by AVARD. This project has several merits. The city of Alba, the city picked up in Alba, then transported to AVARD, then transported back through Alba to the landfill in Minno, all the waste that we collected in town. This will shorten that route a little, quite a bit. The other benefit is the move, this move would be to include the possibility of using smaller trucks to pick up trash in Alba. We expect to be able to implement a voluntary recycle program for the citizens of Alba and possibly be able to sort out scrap metal material, which can then be taken to the scrapyard for sales instead of sending it to the, to Minno, to the landfill. Other projects that we'll undertake will be the replacement of all water meters, which are connected to the Alba Water Distribution System. This represents about 3,700 meters throughout the city. The benefits of this project will, will be reduced reading time, less time, less possibility of human error in reading, and the possibility of more revenues. The city will be able to reduce the time spent reading meters from approximately 20 to 25 days to seven days at the most. With this shortened read time, the city will be able, should be able to start moving, start shortening the time from reading to billing. The next project that we will be looking at for the upcoming year will be the completion of, installation of the traffic signal at the corner of 281 and 64. This was another project that was started in '13-'14. The Oklahoma Department of Transportation anticipates letting this project out in November. We should see sometime in December or January then start, starting to construct. This project will be one which the citizens of Alba requested some time ago and should go a long way to slowing down traffic through town. The other major project that we anticipate trying to bring to this board is the annexation of South of Alba. This annexation project will encompass the airport, the ARC property, the Northwest Tech Center, and Northwestern Oklahoma State University. Staff anticipates additional consents to be filed before this project comes to the city council to be, to officially begin. Would like to go back to the transfer station just a minute, just for a minute. The review period, the comment period for our technical review ended today. That means by the end of this week, should there, if there are no comments that we need to respond to, which there were, there were none last week, we should be able to bid that project, start the bidding on that project as early as Friday of this week and be able to award a bid within 21 days or so. Few other, few other things that you may have gotten in the mail. OML is currently seeking somebody to represent District 11, which would be this district. If anybody would like to be considered for this position, let me know. We'll get the resolution filled out and get your name submitted. Also, you may have received in the mail in the last few days, a, the announcement for the annual OML conference and exposition, which will be September 23rd through the 25th in Oklahoma City. This is always a good trade show, educational experience for staff and council members. If anybody would like to attend, if you'll please let me know, we'll get you, we'll get you signed up. And Mayor and Board, that would be my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very good report, Joe Don. Item number six, discussion and possible action on the recommendation from the Alba Airport Board to purchase a new John Deere 6105D tractor and 57-series 10-foot dozer blade in an amount not to exceed $63,483.82. Joe Don?
This is one of the items that the Alba Airport Board discussed and recommended to this coun, and ultimately recommended back to this council at their last meeting on the 14th. They would like to purchase a new John Deere 6105D tractor and a series 57, 57-series 10-foot dozer blade. The purpose of this purchase would be to provide equipment for the Alba Airport to efficiently mow the airport property and to be able to remove snow buildup in bad weather. This is a FY '14-'15 budgeted purpose, purchase. The amount which was budgeted is not, the not to exceed is $63,484. And this was recommended by at least the majority of the Alba Airport Board. Let Councilman Lael make any comments he'd like to make, and then any discussion?
Please, the tractor, the tractor from West, the hospital, $5,000 over here, wasted a moment. And then, then they got to turn it back, they had no tractor to, so, that won't sound very good, to make the expense a little slow.
Would you like to make a motion to approve this purchase in that amount as listed here?
I'd like to make a motion that we table this for 60 days so that there could be some discussions between several different city entities to discuss the possibility of maybe combining some of the maintenance activities that are at all city-owned properties.
I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, the second.
You'd like to make, you want to go ahead and make your motion?
I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to table this item for 60 days, up to 60 days.
I move. Would you move to do that? I know you want to.
I move, thank you, that we table this item for up to 60 days to further discuss the possibility of joint, of combining any possible maintenance issue, maintenance items at multiple city-owned facilities to see if we can come up with a better solution that affects all the city entities.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, the second, I think. Any discussion?
Yes. Because, in, following that motion, second, I'm curious, the, the item here does not show a mower. Do they own a mower attached to this already? Okay, they already own that. And, and the city recently purchased a snowplow truck that can salt and plow all at the same time, that I think perhaps is following into Mr. Miller's motion, that I wonder what the cost to one time a year go out and plow a runway would be compared to this annual purchase price that we're talking about, so that's my only comment.
And this is, this is not just, not just airport.
Amen.
It's discussions with the Rec Center as well, to see if there's a possibility of, and parks, buildings, it's citywide, to see if there's, if we have overlap in equipment and personnel that are doing the same tasks, where we can maybe combine this and handle that with a single crew of some sort for all these entities, freeing up their, their staff to do other items that they're falling behind on, and possibly free up some money in their budgets as well. Another reason they want their own piece of equipment, there was, for example, a given out there, why they want to use equipment all the time, and that was one, well, they made a comment that there's one time that the runway was snowed over, and there's airplanes circling out, but wind was icing up, and they were going to put it down out, or crash it, and he went up to the runway, and the black pickup, and made tracks down there, and it sort of flamed it. And then another point was made, and was made, that Lynn Martin, he had his son to go down in his plane, and he had his land without him on a snow-covered strip, because he knew where it was, and since he touched down, oh, and that's why they want their own piece of equipment. And I understand, and I'm not saying that we don't, that that doesn't end up happening, but currently, I know that they've got this, the current tractor is budgeted to lease that tractor throughout the remainder of this year. The current lease that they've got, there's money in their budget to continue that lease for the rest of this, for this, this year. And so I don't see that that's going to be preventing them from doing anything that they're currently doing right now. They just want to get a lot for that, on this, this year. Right, and that's why I suggest 60 days, that takes us into September, long before we get the snow out there, so that we can maybe, and the Airport Board is an integral part of this discussion. The manager, chairman, or whoever they want to have take part in that discussion as well as the Rec Center, Rec Board, their director. I think that it's going to be a multi-group gathering to see if there's a way to come together, maybe have one, one group that goes out and handles the majority of some of those large maintenance issues that we've got. Not saying that it's going, that that's going to happen, but I think the discussion needs to take place and bring them, bring all of those people together at the same table instead of handling this separately in three or four different areas every year. It seems that we come up with, one group wants a mower, the other one wants a mower, and then next year or two years later, somebody else is doing it. I think there's a better way that we can possibly come together and figure that out, but we've never had that discussion with multiple groups that are in the city to see if that's possible.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Clerk may call the roll.
Brown.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Creed.
Yes.
Vonstehn.
Yes.
Vonstehn.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Lael.
Yes.
What should we do about item number seven?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
I would recommend that item number seven be tabled at this time.
Okay, so a motion to table item number seven.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Benson, second by Valencia. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Benson.
Yes.
Vonstehn.
Yes.
Yammerer.
Yes.
Lael.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Creed.
Sorry.
Fisher.
Yes.
Item number eight, discussion and possible, possible action on Resolution Number 2014-082, amending the fiscal year 2014-2015 annual budget to reflect the $79,998 grant from the Oklahoma Department of Health for the ambulance department. Joe Don?
I mentioned this last, last week, last council meeting in my manager's report, we did get the notification in, right after that, and this would be the budget amendment to make those purchases be able to take place. It is a grant from the Oklahoma Health, Department of Health for the ambulance department to purchase a life pack with accessories, a ventilator with accessories, a power cot with accessories, to install, install a powered load system in one of the ambulances, and to pay for EMR and structural training and materials for employee.
I move we approve Resolution Number 2014-082, amending fiscal year 2014-2015 annual budget to reflect the $79,998 grant from the Oklahoma Department of Health for the ambulance department.
Motion by Brown.
Seven.
Second by Henifer. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Brown.
Yes.
Yammerer.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Lael.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Vonstehn.
Yes.
Valencia.
Yes.
Creed.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Item number nine, discuss.
Joe Don, would you pass along the appreciation of the council to the ambulance department?
Certainly will.
For the work and give to the scrap.
Certainly will.
Thank you. Item number nine, discuss, discussion and possible action to authorize the mayor to make written request to the city to annex the following described property as listed in your board packet. And Joe Don, I believe this is referred to as?
The airport.
The airport.
And what this is back, the Airport Board voted on March 10th to request of the council to allow the mayor to make a written consent of annexation to the city for the airport This, the Airport Board recognized the benefits of this being located, their property being located within the city limits, and would like to, wanted to have this accomplished. The board also recognized that this action would be a benefit to the city of Alba and Alba Airport Board.
Counselor, do we need two separate motions for the two tracks, or can they be?
Since it's listed on the agenda, you can vote.
Is there a motion to authorize this request?
I move we authorize the mayor to make a request to have the city to annex the described properties on the agenda.
Motion by Brown, second by Lael. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Brown.
Yes.
Lael.
Yes.
Creed.
Yes.
Yammerer.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Vonstehn.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Benson.
Item number 10, discussion and action on annual labor contract with IAFF Local 3782, Alba, Oklahoma, as presented and reviewed by the city attorney.
Disabled, this item was tabled last council meeting for review by the council and the attorneys, so.
On behalf of the city attorney, I did review that contract, and it does appear to be a proper form and order, and if you need a legal opinion, I recommend it be passed.
And if you need a legal opinion, I recommend it be passed.
Recommendation from the city attorney to?
With that, I make the motion that we approve the contract of IAFF Local 3782 labor contract retroactive July 14.
Motion by Benson?
Second.
Second by Miller. Any discussion?
I would like to commend Mr. Miller and those that participated in, Mr. Benson, in doing this. I think this is an exciting opportunity for this council and for our fire department, and I do appreciate the efforts. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Benson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Anther?
Yes.
Lael?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Wilson?
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 Yes.
Benson?
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 Yes.
That's the last item on that agenda, so we'll close that meeting and open the meeting
of the Economic Development Authority. Item number one, discussion and action on the approval of the minutes in the meeting held on July 7, 2014. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Miller, second by Hennifer. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Anther?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lael?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Benson?
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 Yes.
Item number two, discussion and action on the approval of claims.
Mr. Miller?
Mr. Your Honor, I make a motion, we approve claims of $88,632.63.
Twenty-six.
We're the Utility Authority.
Oh, well, I'm looking, my, my agenda book's got the Economic Development Authority in it, sorry, in that spot.
Okay. I'm gonna say it right there. Okay, I make a motion, we approve claims of $88,632.63.
Second.
Motion by Miller, second by Benson. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
That's the last item on that agenda, so we'll close that meeting and open the meeting
of the Economic Development Authority. Item number one, discussion and action on the approval of the minutes in the meeting held on July 7, 2014. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Miller, second by Hennifer. Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Miller?[1760.33]